All right, I think we should get going because we're time constrained and we've got a lot to cover today. So Ms. Goodell, why don't you go ahead and call the role?
Okay. Mr. Castillo.
Here.
Ms. Gill.
Here.
Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
All right, would you please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next on the agenda, well, not exactly. Next up is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, we have an agenda. Next we come to public comments or requests. In accordance with School Board Bylaw 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board and for the record. So if you would like to speak, please fill out a form. We have one form thus far. Allison Kuchma. Welcome. Dealer's Choice, anywhere you want.
The microphone over there.
Ah, that is true.
I just want to be heard. Do I push this button?
I think it should just go on.
It's magic.
There you go.
My name's Allison Kuchma and I live at 813 Fulton Avenue. And I just wanted to talk about the budget process. I know it's a little ahead, but I think that principals are starting to pull together their needs for next year. And I just would like the board to spend some time figuring out a process that would be authentic for how the money is spent. Because it's confusing when there's this presentation, like last year during the budget cycle, about how we're worried about $28,000 for copies, yet there always seems to be money that is just spent, like the contingency fund on the Mount Daniel construction budget. There was no discussion of those items, where $165,000 was spent. It never came up in a meeting, yet the money just went out the door in lieu of having money for substitutes for paraprofessionals out Mount Daniel. So it begs the question, what is the process for spending huge amounts of money in our school district? Because I don't really see that there's a process. We find out that some line items are padded with some amount of money, or more amounts of money, or huge amounts of money. And then there's $65,000 because Dr. Jones finally answered in a way that I could understand that the generator at Mount Daniel was purchased because the maintenance staff wanted it. Well, why did that not, I mean, that's what I understood from your email. So why didn't that come before the school board? And why did that take precedence over having money for paraprofessionals to have subs? Or a halftime ESOL teacher, or et cetera, et cetera. So I just would like you to have a real process for, as you put together the budget moving forward. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public tonight? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is the closed Hold on just a second. Let's see if we can, Mr. Ankuma said he had a late meeting that was going to cause him some delay here. He did not give me an estimated time.
Why don't you try Margaret?
We could do Weldon Cooper stuff, but there's not much there, if you want to do that. I can at least talk about it.
All right, in the absence of two of our members, and some of the issues we need to talk about, I would entertain a motion to revise the agenda. Or I would seek unanimous consent to proceed to item five on the agenda pending the arrival of Mr. Ankuma and Mr. Ward. Any objection? All right, seeing none, we will go to item five on the agenda, the Weldon Cooper enrollment projections. Dr. Jones, Ms. Hi.
Which one you want?
Yeah, I'll just tell you. Let me get it up here. I'll do the one on the left. So what you have loaded, I'm sorry, that's, I was going to have you need to.
Right, I was going to open both, just so you have them.
So what you're looking at is the newest Weldon Cooper projections. And again, these come from our official count on October the first. And they project out the first five years by actual grade level. And then they move to the cohort model in those out years. And they will tell you that, obviously, the out years are the hardest. They, their methodology is using that birth rate data. They look at how many students were actually born, you know, in the city. And then they look at what are the trends and what's happening with all of the cohorts. Kindergarten is generally the most difficult for us to project, and simply because you just don't know what the move-in rate is going to be. But again, we're seeing large numbers. And the number on the far right-hand side, that 2,684, I'm going to double-check this also. I think it should be 2,685, but I think it's because Weldon ran their numbers before. They had that one extra child factored in. And I just want to double-check, because it took us about two weeks this year to get our actual number. What you will see is it's just, it's growth everywhere. When you look at our current third grade, the official count there at 230, which is right up on that top line under the three, that's a large cohort of children. And they grow as they move through the system. So if you follow that on the diagonal, by the time that group, you know, is in eighth grade, you've got approximately 288 students. And that's why it's really pretty consistent in the growth over time. When you're using a model like this, once you can nail down what's happening in pre-K and K. Now, preschool will be, will get easier, simply because the building that we have right now is the building that we have. And because we're only mandated for special needs, we may reach a point where it's hard for us to actually meet the mandate of inclusionary environment, but we know that building has a cap on it. So as that number of children start to grow, it can only grow so big. But again, it's just, we've seen huge growth again, and it kind of tops off this last kind of five, six-year growth that we're seeing. And when you start looking out to 2022, we will be giving you more information in a chart for capital improvements, where you can actually see as all the buildings start maxing out. But when you just look across there, you can see it, even when you move that grade level out, it's, everything starts maxing out again. The high school by 2022 is over 1,000. You almost had 1,100 students. And again, we still have at least two more developments, we know, are coming online, which will add some more units to the city, as well as another number we've been watching this year, and it's not reflected on any of the charts tonight, but we know that there are still 1,000 homes where the land value is greater than the house. So those are the homes that we expect will turn over. And those, when I say 1,000, those are 1,000 homes where we still have, I think it's like 70% of those homes that can bring children to the system. So it's a lot of open house and stock and market.
So here's a question. Is the number of students in those 1,000 different? That's probably asking a lot, but can you tell that there are fewer children in those older homes?
You know, what we were just talking about today, another data point we'd like to run, we didn't have that number until last spring. That's the first time that the city was able to go in and give us that number. We'd like to go in and look and see out of those houses that we know will turn over, how many of them, if we've had new students in the last two years, are coming from the existing home, or is it a knock-down rebuild home? So, and that we don't know. And is it happening in early childhood? Because the knock-down rebuilds are really quite expensive in the city right now. Most of them are over a million. So are we seeing more of an impact in secondary? And we did see, you know, a growth like with our freshman class and this year. So, you know, when you think about that, it's figuring out where that number's coming from. So it's hard to predict, but that's what it is, is a prediction. And we go to the next one for me, Lisa, on there. The other thing that people always want to know is, are the projections accurate? You know, how well do we project? And again, it's not us that actually do the projections, other than, we started in 2012. 1213 was the first year we contracted Weldon Cooper. And before that, it was always just Hunter, and now we do both. And when I get the Weldon Cooper projection, Hunter does his projections, and then we compare the two. And he does it without looking at Weldon Cooper, so that we can see if there's any sort of grade level where we think it could be off. This year, we're just, the growth came from everywhere. So is it single-family homes? Is it new developments? Is it existing? And I think when you see the property chart, you'll be able to see, it was just everywhere. But the growth this year, that Weldon was under projection. We click on the apartment stuff from here.
Could you just go back to that one for a second?
The projection?
Yes. These are K-12, or it was, how do you normalize for PK?
Actually, I want to make sure you can see the bottom portion of that, too. These projections that are in here, John, help me remember. This one's K-12.
They're K through 12 until we started doing pre-K last year. So the last two years includes pre-K, but prior to that, it's just K-12. It's apples and apples. We only put up the projections and the enrollment. If the projection was K through 12, the enrollment we're showing is only K through 12.
And we asked Weldon Cooper last year to start helping with preschool, because we knew that was going to be a challenge going forward. And so that's something we're contracting each year now. When you look down at the bottom, it's just the whole chart, for some reason, it shows up here, you can see what the average variance is over the last 10 years and over the last five years. So when you look at, how many students is it off or on, and what is the average yearly variance? So this is really for us to be able to understand, what does the growth look like now? What does the growth look like over the last 10 years? And are our projections working? And we do feel really good about them. It's going to be, sorry.
As an average yearly variance, I think statistically, that's not accurate, because you, some were positive and some were negative. And when you do that, it should be against the absolute value. So your average variance is going to be closer to 2% than .18%. I mean, some years they're under, some years an over. But to say the average, that misstates statistically the degree of variance.
It may. And I don't know if that's a John Hunter question, really, because I don't do that part of portion, but I'll follow that up with them. This one might be more helpful, where they've broken it out, where you can see it. And that's the actual, the projection, the actual, what the variance in number of students, plus or minus. And then over on the right-hand column is what was the growth also for the school division that year. And you can see the faster we're growing, the more difficult it, it's going to start being, to be spot-on every year. But overall, it's served us really well. And I will say, that 2014-15 year, where you see that 73, the members of the board that were on the board at that time, remember that was a kindergarten. Weldon Cooper had our kindergarten. I want to say like 190, and we ended up getting 160. It was a big, a big change in that, that had an impact that year.
Just one quick note before you go on to the next, Dr. Jones, the thing that jumped out at me on the chart is that Mount Daniel hit its cap around 2019-2020.
And the Weldon Cooper, that?
Sorry, 2020 to 2021. It's right, I think it's exactly at 660. And then it drops down a little. But that's, since that's a hard cap, that increases substantially the urgency of the situation, because that means the Mount Daniel solution is a solution for about three years, and then something else is going to have to be done.
Absolutely. And I, that's one of the reasons, I think, whenever, you know, I told the school board I was leaving, I made a commitment to continue to do my job, because you're paying my salary right now. I make sure that I'm getting all this data for you, because I feel like with an interim coming in, it would be much more difficult to run these kind of numbers. And I think it's critical that the school board, in CIP discussion this year, discuss that very, that very element, because it is more aggressive than it has been. And the other thing, we're working to do another chart for you, is so that you can see the capacity of each building, and what year that actually hit, so that you can look and see what are all the pressures across the buildings. And that's the thing that really struck, you know, struck me, is that you look at 2022, and right now, we have a high school for 750 kids. That's significantly over capacity. And our 68 building, you know, is still, you're talking, it's over capacity. So either trailers, or aggressive kind of mindset, really, it's at every building. Just unless things radically change. And of course, we can only rely on Weldon Cooper, who, you know, looks at that for us. But you're absolutely Want to go to Ward? Yeah, actually, if you go back to the, so along with this, the other chart that we try to get out for you every year, that everybody watches, is the dwellings. So where does the growth coming from? What's happening in the city in regards to growth? And then we look at that range of variance going back to 1989. And just for a reminder, for those of you that have been chart watchers, Mr. Sharp, and one other member, and I can't remember who it was, many years ago, back in 1989, started this chart, and then it just stopped. And when I came, he asked if I would start it up again. And it's a significant effort to do this every year, but I give him credit for being very proactive many years ago in setting this in motion. But what you can see is that where it's in green means it's gone up, where it's that purplish, it's supposed to be red, if you see it, actually. But that's where a number has gone down. Could be slight, could be one, could be three kids. But I would point out, the third one down, which is Oakwood. And you'll see that number for this year is 213 students. And we thought last year's number was big, at 164, I believe it was, or 184, I can't think. But Oakwood is interesting for us this year. It's continuing to climb. And one of the questions that I had, and I asked Mr. Shields about it, and he seemed to concur, is that the rents are a little bit reduced now, because they have more competition? And when they're competing with these two new developments that are online now in the city. And so is that the driver? I really don't know. We used to think it was State Department, but perhaps that's a complex, that's just becoming not necessarily all State Department anymore. Couple of the other ones that I would just point out, if you go, let's see here. Right down here on Cherry Hill, this is your Winter Hill area, right there where Harris Teeter is. And again, that's a significant jump this year, from 143 to 166. And if you look at the prior two years, where it was much closer, but that building is also, has had a big jump. When you look at the newer mixed use, the good thing is Pearson is just up slightly at 127, so that's not a huge increase. Spectrum is kind of really slow to grow, but it'll be interesting to watch that building, now that the units are starting to turn over a little bit more. And then this is our 301 Broad, and our official count in 301 Broad is at 20. And it says draft on this chart, because we're still working just a little bit on it, in that we want to get Tenor Hill on here. Right now, we have zero students, because it just opened. But probably in the next, you know, month, two months, we'll start to see some numbers from there. So you're looking at single-family detached homes. And again, you just see a huge increase from 1,516 to 1,550. And that's a big increase again. Now, what I will point out is over here, the single-family home number is exactly the same. And the city won't be able to give us a new, they didn't think, for several weeks, could be even a couple of months. But they are looking at that, to see if they can pull the newest number, because the number did change over the last year. So that's where we are on single-family homes, but it's everywhere, is basically what's happening with the growth. Any questions on any of that?
Yeah, actually, one, 301 West Broad is the complex with the Harris Teeter, as opposed to Cherry Hill, Winter Hill. Well, you mentioned Harris Teeter.
Right.
That's the old.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that people didn't think that number also included the new development.
Any other questions?
Do we know what grade levels are, like, at West Broad?
West Broad was, I could actually chart that for you. I looked at that, and it looked very mixed whenever we pulled it all. I didn't really see a pattern, but Hunter and I haven't actually, sometimes when you put it on paper, all of a sudden, something jumps out. But first glance, I didn't see anything that stood out, because I thought maybe it was all little kids.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we certainly can chart some of that stuff.
Is it possible, I mean, one of the things I'm thinking about is that, you know, the single-family home growth is steady, but seems relatively predictable, in the sense that, you know, it's going up a little bit each year. The biggest jump, as you pointed out, Dr. Jones, is Oakwood. And there are other ones that jump around, but that was obviously the biggest driver for this year. Particularly for the larger buildings, is it possible to do something like this? What I'm wondering is, when do those changes occur? Are they all during the summer? Or is there a prediction about what that's going to be based on, if you did sort of a May version of this, would you be able to look forward to what was going to happen in the fall, and be able to be more prepared for it, rather than, you know, not knowing what Oakwood was going to be?
Yeah, you know, we used to run this, well, I say we used to, we've only been doing it for five years, for me. So the first two years we did it, we ran it a couple times during the year. And because we do this in Falls Church, it put out so much information in the community, that people are like, well, that's not what the number was on the chart that I saw. And so that's why we started going only the official count date. We do look at that. And I will say, probably if we did it in, I want to say it's like March, where we usually peak, we'd have to go back and run those numbers. It possibly could be a help. I, but Oakwood this year, and I, I mean, and I really do study this every year. I don't know what it is, other than it's the price of the units, but it's all of the apartment complexes, because I thought maybe Merrill House and some of those would come down significantly. Because what you'll hear people in this, in the city say, just community members, is that, oh, but they're shifting from the older apartments. So last year, I went back and tried to run, okay, and I've done it on this one, like 301 Broad, how many are new to the school division, and how many actually transferred somewhere else? But when they're transferring, their place is getting backfilled. And so we could try that in March. It might be helpful to be, to look at that. I don't know.
It would be interesting. You probably don't have the records going back historically, but at least in real time, I think we could check, you know, what it is each month. And if there's a, you know, it would be good to know if there's a statistical pattern for when the larger buildings experienced their growth. I would bet most of it's during the summer, because that's when families with kids try to move. I just don't know if it's at all predicted by, or you could get to a slightly better place by looking at, by the end-of-the-year numbers.
Yeah. The one thing I would say is that we run so much data like this, that we don't have a statistician person. And so part of the challenge is, you've got John Brett, Hunter, and myself, and we each carry different components. Once you start the budget, until you actually complete that in April, May, it just becomes almost impossible, especially for someone like Hunter. So that's part of the challenge, is maybe looking in future, could you contract somebody that does nothing but just runs these numbers for you to take that pressure off of staff? Could probably be really helpful. But then you also have to worry about FERPA, and you have to make sure they're actually employed and all of that, so, because we don't even send our data over to the city staff.
General government staff.
General government, thank you.
Any other questions? So is there anything in the trends or numbers that you see here that illuminates the enrollment projections? Are they, there's obviously, there are many kinds of housing stock. Is there any way to tell that, you know, there is a, I mean, Oakwood is furnished, correct? Are there any?
Yeah, a lot of it's not furnished. You can choose, but yeah.
So I don't.
Well, and another, you do bring up an interesting point about Oakwood, though, is that when Pearson Square came online, the whole top floor are, they're like house, houses, you know, they're large square footage, they are three-bedroom. With the newer developments, if you are a family that needed three bedrooms, they don't have them. They're having one and two bedrooms. And Oakwood actually has some units where they have knocked the wall out to make, like, three-bedroom, bigger, nice units. So the size of the unit could be a driver for a family moving into Falls Church, if you're trying to find a larger unit, because Pearson Square doesn't have very many. I mean, that are open, they generally have our families already in them. And the newer developments don't have that. So, and it is a nice complex. I mean, I, you know, have been inside most of these, and it's a nice complex. But that's why I say, when you go down to that third little green bar, like Merrill House, I thought maybe that number would kind of be going down a little bit, because people are shifting, but they're, it just doesn't really seem to be happening.
And I guess on the ratios, have you tried breaking the ratios out just from 2013 to the present? Because 1989's sort of, so it's ancient history to some extent. And these ranges are pretty expansive. It would be interesting to see if there's some more discernible pattern you could see if you, if you just did the more recent years.
Sure. I don't think that that would be, because the formula's all in there. So I think Hunter could probably do that for us.
Okay. All right, well, Ms. Ward is on her way. It is a little after seven. I would suggest that we convene for the closed meeting and just get going. And then when she arrives, she arrives. I think we should probably go across to.
I don't think there's any chairs in there, so we were leaving here. Because we have that big meeting in here tonight, we've pulled all the chairs.
We can stay.
You all right to stand?
It'll keep us from going on too long.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, it's already 7:03 anyway, isn't it?
So would somebody move us into closed?
No, no, they're going to stand.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.23711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff requirements, retirement, excuse me, staff performance, EPED assignments and resignation, and advisory committee appointments and resignations; in discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for interim superintendent, and search firm consultants, and under Section 2.23711A11, tests, examinations, or other records exempt under Section 2.23705.1, in particular, records related to the negotiation and award of a specific contract where competition or bargaining is involved, and where the release of such records would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, 2.23705.1, Section 12.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Goodell, would you call the role?
Yes. Mr. Castillo.
Yes.
Ms. Gill.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
And Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Okay, all right, let us go across.
I move that we reconvene to open session.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, would somebody certify the closed meeting, please?
Mr. Chairman, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge: one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed hearing were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. Ms. Goodell, would you?
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
And Ms. Ward.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now we come to the consent agenda. Would seek unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda? Right, without objection, so ordered. Before we adjourn, there are two notable and noteworthy personnel items that I would like to call out. First of all, Deng Nguyen, where are you, Deng? Deng, welcome. Congratulations, effective January 1st. Deng will be in charge of the IT shop here, taking over from Rick Jowers after his many years of faithful service. And we are very pleased to welcome you into that new role. And congratulations, and we know you will continue to do a great job. So congratulations. And then we also have, we welcome Patricia Minson, who will be stepping into the able shoes of Tom Horn, providing legal counsel and support. You go by Tricia, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, and we are very glad to have you. I think we'll be, we'll be giving you a run for your money, so. Again, it's great to have you here, and if you'd like to come up here, we'd love to shake your hand, Deng, same thing, too. And I believe you brought your husband here with you as well?
I did, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, welcome. Thank you for coming, sir. I hope you're not a baseball fan, because that means you're missing something right now, so. All right.
Thanks to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Hi.
Hi, nice to meet you.
What's the best way to...
This way.
Yeah, we're kind of...
Not going to the tripod.
That's your first test.
Hey, John, do you have your camera fired up?
Congratulations.
Margaret, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Erin. Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, you're kind of stuck. Oh, congratulations.
All right, we're gonna steal a quick picture with you.
Oh, okay.
So I guess we're gonna stand in front of the projector unless there's...
Turn. Turn. That's where to get there, mic not...
Yeah, I think that's what I'm thinking. A little more inclined.
Putting you through the trials early.
Hardcore.
Not the wall. No, 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 for the board.
Can you, can we fit? Yep.
Get cozy.
Love it, Matt Dingle, but it goes behind.
All right. I think now we can adjourn and kick off Phase Two tonight, our joint meeting with City Council. I think the Vice Mayor and the Mayor are here. Ms. Hardy is here. Mr. Shields. So, yeah, come on up.